...of the Holy Spirit, and we pray for each other that we will be able to learn in the fullness of the Holy Spirit. And we're still dealing with Abraham. Abraham is such a primordial person in the Bible. And that word means basic, fundamental. We're studying places and persons and the purpose and the principles by which God works. And the person of Abraham is such a very vital thing that God did when He called him out of Eretu Chaldees. Let's have a word of prayer and ask the Lord to be with us today. Do I have a volunteer to lead us in prayer this morning?
Okay. Thank you for this time we can gather to study your word. I pray that you bless both Larry, our teacher, help him to open up things to our minds that we might see before. I pray that you would enlighten us, help us to understand, help us to have a better understanding of your word and your workings and your dealings with the Jewish people and with us. Bless this time together now, as can Jesus, amen.
Amen. Now, Israel, we've been talking before class started about Israel and the end times and so forth. Israel is the key to understanding prophecy. It is the key to understanding God's plan of redemption. Abraham is the key to what God began in his setting up Israel as a nation. And though we talked about Abraham last time, there are so many things relative to the life of Abraham in both the Old and the New Testaments until, I feel that it would be good if we would finish up this morning and go back and again deal with Abraham and specifically see how he applies to us. I don't think there are any Jewish people in our class today. All of us are Gentiles. And yet, the word of God makes it very clear that we are directly related to Abraham as believers in the Lord Jesus Christ. He is a very important figure in our lives as Christians. So, if you would today, open your Bible to the book of Genesis, chapter 15, and verse number six is what we're going to begin reading with. I hope I'll be able to speak, but my throat getting clogged up badly. I'm wondering recently if the reason I have such problems with my throat when I try to speak is because it's an emotional thing. When I come to this class and I see all you guys sitting out there, I get scared. I've been preaching for quite a few years, and I never go in before a class to teach, I'm never standing in a pulpit to preach, that I don't feel the tremendous need to lean upon the Lord. And I trust that it will never ever be any different. I think that's the way it should be, whether it's myself or someone else. In the book of Genesis, chapter number 15, we have something that occurs that had never occurred before in the Bible. And we're going to be kind of digging a little bit deep today, not that I'm all that deep, but these things are profound. And it is going to demand that we play close attention, and you pray for me. In Genesis 15, in verse number six, this is a verse that you've seen many times before, and it's been repeated in the New Testament, speaking of Abraham. It says, "And he believed in the Lord, and the Lord counted it to him for righteousness." Now, we have already seen that there is a very, very fundamental verse in Genesis, chapter 315, in which God promised that through the seed of a woman, the head of a serpent was going to be bruised, or crushed, or ended, or put to death. And here is another one of those very, very prime verses in the Bible. "And he believed in the Lord, and he counted it to him for righteousness." The thing that we must always bear in mind when we come to the study of the word of God is the importance of what we call established truth. Now, when we get to the New Testament and we begin to find out about things like baptism, for example, is that nothing about these things that God gives us in the New Testament in any way contradicts or works against the truth that He has established in the Old Testament. So, when we come to the question, for example, of baptism over regeneration, there's no question about it. There is absolutely no question as to whether or not we're saved by being baptized in water, because the truth has already been established, and we just read it in Genesis, chapter 15, and verse six. "And he believed in the Lord, and he counted it to him for righteousness." Now, the first time the pronoun "he" is given, it's speaking of Abraham, of course, "he," Abraham. And then the second time, it says, "And he counted it to him." The second "he," of course, is speaking of God. "And counted it to him," that is, to Abraham, "for righteousness." Now, the reason this is such a very important thought is simply because righteousness is the only key that will open the door and let any person go to heaven. You say, "Well, that counts me out because I'm not righteous. I will never ever be able to be righteous." Well, we're going to see what God has to say about that. But it's not how good we are, it's not by our works, neither by baptism or anything else, it's not by our works, but it's His grace, His mercy that lets us be saved, makes us saved to go to heaven. But when it says here, "And he believed in the Lord, and he counted it to him for righteousness," just mark it down wherever it is you mark the truth, that salvation comes to us by the grace of God on the basis of faith. The only way to be saved is by faith. There are so many religious innovations out there. Some were started by the Roman Catholic Church, and others were continued by the Protestant churches. And these innovations are not grace. There are those who believe in observing the sacraments, they believe in the Eucharist, the Catholics believe in the Mass, the Eucharist of the Mass of the Day of the Lamb, and so forth and so on. But we come to recognize, when we realize this, those things are not contributing factors. If a person believes that he is saved by grace through faith in the Lord Jesus Christ, and then later he comes to say, "Well, I've got to observe the sacraments," because the teachings of the sacraments is that these things have saving grace in them, that the Lord's presence is there in that bread and in that wine. But dear friends, the Lord's presence is in the believer. From the moment he repents of sin and trusts Christ as his personal Savior, the Holy Spirit of God, one of the three divine persons of a Godhead, God the Father is on His throne, God the Son is at His right hand, making intercession for us, and God the Holy Spirit, from the moment we trust Christ as our Savior, takes up residence within us. We need no greater presence of God in our lives, and this is the most wonderful thing that we have, His presence in our lives. But in this text that we're reading, Genesis 15, in verse six, "And he believed in the Lord, and he counted it to him for righteousness." This occurs at the moment we repent of sin and trust Christ as our personal Savior. And this establishes the truth that this is the only way that we can receive the gift of God's righteousness being imputed to us, or given to us, or added to us, is through believing in the Lord Jesus Christ, and this is the only way. So, the sacraments and the Eucharist and the Mass have no saving qualities. They do not have the power either to save or to add to the salvation of a person. The word sacrament, the word Eucharist, is not found in the Bible. And if we come and say, "Well, the Lord comes, and this bread becomes His body," or this unfermented wine, they don't do the unfermented deal. But if we say that that has saving grace, that that becomes His blood, then we have misappropriated the basic truth, the established truth of salvation by grace through faith and through faith alone. Now, the word that is given here, "And he believed in the Lord," there are other words for faith that are given in the Bible. But this word right here, "He believed in the Lord," is the first time that this Hebrew word has ever used in the Old Testament. Abraham lived in Eretu Chaldees, Eretu Chaldees. And Abraham was a pagan. He had absolutely no peers for his faith. There was nobody in Abraham's life to whom he could look for an example. And by the sovereign grace of God, God appeared to Abraham and made some specific promise. Now, we read that promise last time in Genesis, chapter 12, verses 1, 2, and 3, where God called Abraham and made him the father of the nation of Israel. And not only that, but he became the father of other nations also. We'll talk about that in just a moment. But this is the first time that this word is used. This is not to say that Abel did not have faith, for he did, he had saving grace by faith. This is not to say that Noah did not have faith, because he did. But this word is in a particular use that is given here in chapter 15, in verse six. "He believed in the Lord." I would like to say that this faith, the best I can understand it, is a reproducing faith. The faith that Abraham had was a faith that could be passed on, a faith that could be inherited. And we talked about that last time from Romans, chapter 1, verse 17, from faith to faith. And we saw last time that not only did God give this covenant to Abraham, but He also repeated this covenant to Isaac, and He repeated this covenant to Jacob, and on and on. Just this morning, early, I was reading in my personal Bible reading, and I came across this verse, I'd like to share it with you. It's from the book of Leviticus, in verse number 42 of chapter 26. "Then, while I remember my covenant with Jacob..." Now, he uses the word covenant, and we talked about already the difference between a covenant and a contract, and that's what salvation is today, when an individual center repents of dead works and sin and trusts Christ as his personal Savior. His relationship to God is a covenant relationship, not a contract. "Okay, God, you do your part, and I'll do my part, and together I'll get to heaven." No, salvation is my grace. God does it all. Now, there are great changes that come into our lives when we get saved. There is a great response because we have been made new in Christ. We have a new life, and things are different. But it says here in Leviticus, chapter 26, verse 42, "Then, while I remember my covenant with Jacob, and also my covenant with Isaac, and also my covenant with Abraham, will I remember, and I will remember the land." Now, I think we've already given a definition for the word Zionism or Zionist. A Zionist is anyone who believes that Jerusalem belongs to the Jews. And by that definition, I'm a Zionist. I believe that Jerusalem does belong to the Jews. My reason for believing that is many verses of Scripture, all through the Bible, but if you will just turn over to the book of Psalms, Psalm 105, I want you to read another passage. In verse 1 through 4, it's talking about giving a thanks to the Lord and glory to His name and praise to His name. And then in verse number 5, it says, "Remember His marvelous works that He hath done, His wonders and judgments, and the judgments of His mouth." Now, we're going to begin reading with Psalm 105 and verse number 6, because it so perfectly dovetails into what we've already read. "O ye seed of Abraham, his servant..." This is Psalm 105, verse 6. "O ye seed of Abraham, his servant, ye children of Jacob, his chosen." He is the Lord our God. His judgments are in all the earth. By the way, there is no other God. He is the only one true living God of the universe. Verse 8. "He hath remembered His covenant forever." Now, if it's a contract, then we can break it. And that's why many people believe that they can lose their salvation. They think it depends on them, and if it depends on them, they can lose their salvation, not only they, but everybody. If salvation can be lost due to our weakness in the flesh, if that is possible, if that were possible, let me say it in a subjunctive, if that were possible, none of us would ever go to heaven. There wouldn't be any hope for anybody. It has to be a covenant, God doing it all by grace in our hearts and in ours. "He hath remembered His covenant forever, the word which He commanded to a thousand generations." Now, we're still within that framework. If we count the generations from the beginning of time, we're still within that framework. We still qualify to a thousand generations. Verse 9. "Which covenant He made with Abraham, and His oath unto Isaac, and confirmed the same unto Jacob for law, and to Israel for an everlasting covenant." Now, notice verse 11. "Saying unto thee will I give the land of Canaan, the lot of your inheritance." He did not give it to the Mohammedans, he did not give it to the descendants of Ishmael. The Bible says, "In Isaac shall I see be called," and so he gave this to the Jewish people, "when they were but a few men in number, yea, very few, and strangers in it." Now, to whom does the land of Canaan belong? It belongs to the Jews. And though they are under the judgment of God right now, they have gone back to the land, but they've gone back in unbelief, and God still has a period of time in which He is going to deal with that nation. And it's almost upon us, I just feel sure in my heart and mind, and so. And I'm so excited about the day in which we live. I am alerted, I am alarmed. I think I've said this before, forgive me if I repeat myself, but this is something very real in my thinking every day. There's not a day that passes, and I'm sure you're the same, you're the same way. The Lord Jesus has come. It isn't going to be very long at all, and we're going to have our new bodies, and we're going to be in His presence forevermore. "And so shall we ever be with the Lord," says the prophecy. So, what we have here in the life of Abraham is something that is the utmost importance. God establishes some basic truth in the life and through the life of Abraham. Now, was Abraham faithful? He was not. He was not. But it doesn't matter whether Abraham was faithful or not. God made a covenant, not a contract. Am I 100% faithful? I am not. Do I deserve to go to heaven? I do not. Could I go if it were left up to me? I could not, and I would not. Salvation is of the Lord, and it's in His name that we give the honor and the glory and the praise. Now, we have seen the low points and the high points in the life of Abraham. And those low points did not disqualify him for what God called him and prepared him for. Abraham's greatest significance rests in the fact that God chose him and prepared him to be the patriarch of the nation of Israel. And you know from your glossary in the back of your book there, a patriarch is the father of a family or the founder of a nation. And God established that by calling Abraham, so therefore, we sow the life of Abraham with great interest because of the great significance that comes to us personally and individually, not only of the Jews, but through him, of the Gentiles also. Now, one of the greatest takes in the New Testament that reveals to us the significance of the life of Abraham, what God did to and through him, and as that applies to us as individuals. It applies to us in the family of God, it applies to us in the kingdom of God, it applies to us in the church of God, or maybe I should say, the churches of God. And those three terms are very, very significant, and they do not mean the same. These three words, the family, the kingdom, and the church, are not synonyms. They have their own definition, and they have their own way in which they play out in the Holy Scriptures and in which they play out in our lives. But there is a passage of Scripture in the New Testament that so directly takes the significance of the life of Abraham and applies it directly and personally to each one of us who are believers in Christ today. And that chapter is the book of Romans, chapter 4. The book of Romans, chapter 4. Now, it is our plan and purpose in these studies that we're having on Saturday mornings, two times a month, that we will study the Bible by periods. And in doing so, we're not going to ignore the books. Now, we're currently studying in the book of Genesis. And I want to repeat, there's more there than we can, I mean, if we just went into the details of the book of Genesis, we never would get out of Genesis. Matter of fact, we could take one verse, and we never would get out of that verse. But here in the book of Genesis, we have so many things. Now, next time, the Lord willing, the next time we meet, which is supposed to be the 23rd, which will be the 4th of, 4th Saturday in the month of August, but I will be traveling back from Mexico. And so, if it's okay with the class, I'd like to postpone that to the 5th Saturday of this month. We're meeting today, the 2nd Saturday. The next class will be the 5th Saturday of the month, which I think will be the 30th of August. And now that I made that announcement, I've broken my chain of thought. Give this a minute a little bit, and it'll come back to me in just a minute. Okay, we're starting over here in the book of Romans, chapter 4, in just a moment. But what I'm saying is, we're going to be studying a survey of the Bible. We're not going to have time to get into a lot of the important detail. The exception to that is today, this morning in the class. We're going to get into some of the details of the life of Abraham, because it's so very applicable to our own individual lives. Okay, Romans, chapter number 4. We're not going to read every verse in this chapter, but we're going to single out some of the important ones. Romans, chapter 4, verse number 1. "What shall we say then, that Abraham, our father, as pertaining to the flesh, hath found? For if Abraham were justified by works, he hath whereafter glory, but not before God." But was he justified by works? Now, the book of James says that he was. But we have to realize that what that's talking about there is the second aspect of salvation. In other words, the works confirmed his faith in the eyes of other people. But for us, when we come to the first aspect of salvation, that is, the salvation of our soul, the writing of our name in the Lamb's book of life, and this type of thing, the first aspect of salvation, we're not saved by works in any way. And Abraham proved that by means of his failures. God made a covenant. He said, "God said, 'Abraham, this is what I'm going to do, and I'm going to do it,' and nothing can change that." And when we came and repented in faith and trusted Christ as our Savior, God says, "I'm saving you by my grace, and nothing can change that." Okay. "But what saith the Scriptures?" Verse number 3. "Abraham believed God." Now, here is a direct reference to the word that we have in the sixth verse of the 15th chapter that we read just a while ago up in the book of Genesis. "Abraham believed God, and it was counted to him for righteousness." Now, if you will, just hold your place right there and go back in Romans, just one chapter, and go back to the, uh, chapter 3, and verse number 22. "Even the righteousness of God, which is by faith of Jesus Christ unto all, and upon all them that believe; for there is no difference, for all that sinning come short of the glory of God." But now notice something here in verse number 22, chapter 3 of Romans. "Even the righteousness of God..." I have said already, and we have noticed already, that righteousness is the key that unlocks the door to heaven, but it is not our practical, everyday righteousness. It is our positional righteousness that we have in God, whereby we have received the gift of God's righteousness. The only way we can receive such a thing as that is as a gift. We have received the gift of God's righteousness, and that's what He's talking about here. So, the key that unlocks the door to heaven is righteousness, but let's qualify that. So, the key that unlocks the door to heaven is righteousness, but let's qualify that, the righteousness of God. The righteousness of God. Verse number 25. "Whom God has set forth..." Well, let's go back to verse 24. Romans, chapter three, verse 24. "...being justified freely by his grace..." No way you can attain it. It has to be obtained by the gift, freely by his grace, through the redemption that is in Christ Jesus. Verse 25. "Whom God has set forth to be a perpetuation..." That word means satisfaction. And when we have the righteousness of Christ, when we're claiming what he has got, then we have satisfied God. "Through faith in his B-L-O-O-D, through faith in his blood, to declare..." What? To declare whose righteousness? His righteousness. His righteousness. "For the remission of sins that are past, through the forbearance of God." To declare, I say at this time, his, not mine, his righteousness, that he might be just and the justifier of him which believeth in Jesus. Now, we started the class by talking about established truth. When truth is established by the Holy Scriptures, then nothing can contest that. Nothing can argue about that. No other alternative can be considered. The alternatives of men are not to be considered when God has established his law, his law of the gift of his righteousness. "That he might be just and the justifier of him which believeth in Jesus." Now, in order to justify you and me, and that makes us as if we had never just, as if we had never sinned. In order to make us just, he has to remain just in the process. He cannot take our sins and just sweep them under the rug and forget about them and ignore them. He has to deal with those sins. The wages of sin is death. Somebody had to die. If that meant we died, then we go to hell for eternity. But God gave his own begotten Son, who died on the cross of Calvary. That is God's covenant with us. We didn't have anything to do with that. We did not sacrifice God's Son. God sacrificed his Son. This was not our idea. This was God's idea. Oh, these truths are so precious. Verse number four, going back to Romans, chapter four. "Now to him that worketh is a reward, not reckoned of grace, but of debt." In other words, if the plan of salvation whereby baptismal regeneration or anything else that a man could do in a contract with God, if that were possible, then God would have no option but to save us. God would be obligated. God does not owe anybody anything. He is completely paid up. "Now to him that worketh is a reward, not reckoned of grace, but of debt." This verse number four is just simply saying in effect, there is absolutely no way unto the sin in which a person can be saved by works. Verse number five. "But to him that worketh not..." I've underlined those two words. "Worketh not." "...but believeth on him that justifies the ungone, his faith is counted for righteousness." Now, there are two things that occur in the life of a person when he comes to know Christ as Savior. One is repentance. In the sixth chapter of the Book of Hebrews, it speaks of repentance from dead works. What are dead works? Works that do not avail, that are no good. And yet, the majority of the people in the world, they have the idea that this is the way we get saved, by dead works. But "worketh not," that means repentance. That means laying aside, as the songwriter said, "In my hand no price I bring, simply to thy cross I cling." Now, what we're doing right now is just nailing down the significance of the life of Abraham before we move on in other parts of the Bible. And so he says, "Worketh not, but believeth on him that justifies the ungone, his faith is counted for righteousness." That's the only thing, by faith only. And the tragedy of this is if we add anything to that, we cancel that. If we add anything to the grace of God, we annul the grace of God. Not actually we receive it, but of course before we receive it. Now then, go down if you will please to verse number 11. Well, let's go to verse number nine. "Cometh this blessedness then upon the circumcision only..." Now, God gave the right, R-I-T-E, of circumcision to Abraham as a sign of God's seal upon his life and claim upon him. And you know what circumcision is. "But this blessedness cometh upon..." Not upon the circumcision only, but on the uncircumcised also. Now, whether or not your mother had you in a hospital and had the doctor to circumcise you when you were a baby, doesn't enter in here. We, by a blanket description, are Gentiles. We are uncircumcised Gentiles, uncircumcised for listings. You personally may or may not be. But as a blanket description of Gentiles, we're uncircumcised. Abraham was circumcised as a sign of a faith that he had. You and I may or may not be circumcised, but we just consider ourselves as being uncircumcised because this promise comes to us only. One of the great differences between a Jew and a Gentile is the fact that the Jews are the men who are circumcised. But we as Gentiles are included in this grace. God said in the third verse of the twelfth chapter of Genesis, "And in thee shall all families of the earth be blessed." Not only Jews, but Gentiles also. Verse 11. "And he received the sign of circumcision, a seal of the righteousness of the faith which he had, yet being uncircumcised." Now, this is a very interesting point. Before God ever gave the right, R-I-T-E, of circumcision, he gave this promise to Abraham. He was an uncircumcised person when he gave it. "A seal of the righteousness which he had, yet being uncircumcised, that he might be the father of all them that believe." Now, he's not only the puppy of the Jews, but he is also the father of all them that believe. Have you believed on the Lord Jesus Christ as your Savior? Then Abraham is your father. God started something in Genesis, chapter 15, and verse number six, that has come all the way through to all families of the earth, and we are included in that. "Though they be not circumcised, that righteousness might be imputed unto them also." And we can stop right here and give glory and thanks to God for that. "And the father of circumcision to them who are not of circumcision only, but who also walk in the steps of that faith of our Father Abraham, which he had, being yet uncircumcised." I personally have no patience for those people who say, but the Old Testament is not for us today. We have a complete Bible, Old Testament and New Testament, and to be mighty in the Scriptures means that we recognize the difference, but we don't do away with one. Verse number 13. "For the promise that he should be heir of the world was not to Abraham or to his seed through the law, but through the righteousness of faith. For if they which are of the law be heirs, faith is made void, and the promise of none effect." In other words, if this applies only to people who keep the law, then that, that makes void the established truth of my faith only. You cannot receive the Lord Jesus Christ with one hand, so to speak, and hold on to any of your vain theological preferences with the other hand, such as baptismal regeneration, such as the mediocritship of Mary, and a thousand other things that Satan may have to add to the people's faith. We repent of those things. To repent means to turn away from them. And having believed in those things, we now no longer believe in those things in order that we might believe exclusively in the Lord Jesus Christ. This wedding ring that I wear on my hand indicates that when I received Judy Ann Howell, who became Judy Ann Sexton, as my one and only wife, I repented of all the girlfriends that I had known in the past. I repented of them in order to give my life exclusively to her. And I'm glad I did, almost six to seven years ago. And you have a large number of years that you've been married to. But how wonderful it is to see this relationship that we have to God, it's by the established truth that God established in covenant relationship with Abraham, and it was an eternal covenant. Verse 14. "For if they which are of the law be heirs, faith is made void, and the promise made of none effect." Hold your finger there and turn right over to the Book of Romans, chapter number 11, and verse number six. Repentance is a very vital part of believing. You cannot hold on to the old beliefs and reach out with the other to Christ. You have to turn loose and turn away from them. The Bible says in Romans 11, verse six, "And if by grace, then it is no more of works." That is a plain statement. Works cannot be considered. Otherwise, grace is no more grace. Duh. That's pretty plain. That shouldn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. But if it be of works, then it is no more grace. Otherwise, work is no more work. Now, back to Romans, chapter number four. "Because the law..." Verse 15. "Because the law worketh wrath; for where no law is, there is no transgression." Now, I'm going to stop this class earlier than I did the last time. I went well over an hour. And so, we've been about 45 minutes so far. We're going to take a break, and I probably won't hold you as long when we come back after the break, but there's something very, very important in this chapter four of Romans, talking about Abraham. And we'll talk about that when we come back. Okay, as we continue now, we're still in Romans, chapter number four. And what we're trying to do in this class today is just nail down the importance and the significance of the life of Abraham. Because as we sow the Bible, we're going to be studying places, persons, purpose, and principles. And of course, Abraham is a very, very significant person. And next time, we're going to see how significant is the life of Moses, the Lord willing. But now, as we look into the fourth chapter of the Book of Romans again, we will look at verse number 16. "Therefore..." And of course, that refers back to all that we have seen up until this point. "Therefore it is of faith that it might be by grace." In other words, it cannot be by grace if it is not by faith. If there is anything added to the recipe, it destroys the whole product. "Therefore it is of faith that it might be by grace. To the end the promise might be sure to all the seed, not to that only which is of the law, but to that also which is of the faith of Abraham." That's a significant statement. "Who is the father of us all." Now then, as we come to verse number 17, we're getting ready to plunge deep. And so, we're going to all put on our oxygen masks, and we're going to scuba dive. And as we begin this verse, number 17. "As it is written, I have made thee a father of many nations. Before him whom he believed, even God, who quickeneth the dead, and calleth those things which be not as though they were." Now, there are several statements in this verse that deserve our careful attention. He says, "As it is written, I have made thee a father of many nations." I think it would be good, however, if we would just take that last phrase, because it sets the stage of what he's talking about also in this verse, and then we'll come back to that statement in just a moment. But it says on the latter part of the verse, "God who quickeneth the dead, and calleth those things which be not as though they were." Now, I could do that today, and you would say, brother, you are absolutely stupid. I could hold this up and say, this... Let me do it like this. I could hold this up and say, this is a bottle of cold water. If I did that, I would be calling this something that it was not, as if it were a bottle of cold water. But you're looking at me, and you're thinking, well, I know that old people kind of lose it when they get, their brain gets the color of their hair outside. But anyway, you would be absolutely right if you came to that conclusion. But suppose God told you that this was a glass of water. I don't have the power to turn this into a glass of water. But God could take this and make anything out of it he wanted to, because he took nothing and made everything that is. So, if God says it, then there must be some kind of significance to it, and the best thing for us to do is not argue with it, we just sit up and listen and see what God has to say. It says that, "He calleth those things which be not as though they were." It says that, "He calleth those things which be not, as though they were." Now, I'll tell you something. Personally, I'm not very saintly, but God says I'm a saint. I couldn't prove that I'm a holy, holy, holy person. God says that I am. He calleth those things which are not, as though they were. The world has the ability to give us the wrong philosophy. As we think about this, that God calleth those things which are not, as though they were, I want us to think also, by way of introduction, of two other things. One is to call things that are, as they are not, and Satan is the master of that. "Yea, hath God said, ye shall surely die; ye shall not surely die." He has taken the established truth of God and called that which is, as if it were not. We hear that every day. The majority must be right. Is it? It doesn't matter what you believe. One church is as good as another. The most important thing is unity. It must be true if Dr. So-and-so believes it. Let your conscience be your guide, instead of the Word of God. If it feels good, do it. God helps those who help themselves. Salvation is a contract, not a covenant, in other words. Look out for all, number one, or should we be compassionate and concerned for others? You need to feel good about yourself, modern psychology. We're not going to feel good about ourselves until we become convicted by the Holy Spirit. It will be different after we're married. No, it'll be too late after you're married. You have noticed, have you noticed, that our pastor seems to have lost touch with the times? All of these philosophies come, and they're changing the truth. The second thing that we approach, as we think about, as we approach our text, is calling things that are, as they are. Why are we sinners? Because God says that we're sinners. We can't say, "Well, I'm a sinner because I commit sin." No, we commit sin because we are sinners. No one else has the right or authority to establish a code of morality. No one else would have thought of it. And we're sinners because God's Word has constituted the fact that we are sinners. God said it, and that settles it. Now, this part right here, calling those things which are not, as though they were. The fact of the call establishes the covenant, because of who made the call. There's so many things that could be said along this line. The great thing in the world is that God loves us. The great mystery in the world is why He loves us. But God has the power to establish something simply by speaking it into existence. Let there be light, and there was light. Now, it doesn't matter what anybody thinks about you. If God thinks that you're a child of God, then nothing else matters. I have a very choice passage of Scripture that I wanted to read, and I should have marked it down and put it in my outline, but it was a verse in the book of Psalms. Yeah, here it is. Psalm, chapter 35. "Plead my cause, O Lord," verse 1, "Plead my cause, O Lord, with them that strive with me; Fight against them that fight against me; Take hold of shield and buckler, and stand up for mine help." And here it is. "Draw out also the spear, and stomp the way against them that persecute me." Now here it is. "Say unto my soul, I am thy salvation." Now, if God says it, nothing else really should be considered. The psalmist is saying, psalmist stated, "Say unto my soul, I am thy salvation." Listen to the testimony of the Apostle Paul. "Nevertheless, the foundation of God standeth sure, having this theory; the Lord knoweth them that are his. And let everyone that nameth the name of Christ depart from iniquity." How wonderful it is that what God has said has established the fact. Who is Abraham? He's a nobody. He's an idol worshiper. He's from Ur of the Chaldees. He's a nobody. But when God called him in Genesis 12, 1, 2, and 3, that changed everything. "And Abraham believed in the Lord, and he counted it him for righteousness." God points his finger at the life of Abraham, at the man Abraham, and said, "This man is righteous." Well, it sure doesn't look like it to me when I see that he went down into Egypt and lied about his wife, saying that she is my sister. And that beautiful passage there in the book of Genesis whereby the three heavenly messengers came, I believe one of them happened to be the Lord, and they came to visit with Abraham. And Abraham sent a servant out to get the calf, and told his wife Sarah to prepare it and fix a meal. And then, as they were sitting there, and they had eaten, the heavenly messenger says, "Where is Sarah?" "Oh, she's in the tent." And he says, "I'm going to restore her reproductive system, and she's going to have a baby." Now here's a 90-year-old woman. And the Lord said, "Why are you laughing?" "Oh, I didn't laugh." You did laugh. Perhaps in a wrong way, but before it was over, she was laughing in a good way. God restored the body of a 90-year-old woman and gave her reproductive capabilities so that Isaac could be born. And after that, he went down to another place and lied about his wife, saying she is my sister, or had her to do it. So, we can't look at Abraham and say, "Oh, there's a holy man of God," where God says, "He's righteous." And so, we see the fulfillment of this wonderful verse of Scripture here in Romans, chapter number four, and calleth those things which be not, as though they were. I don't have to worry about my salvation. It's in the hands of God. And I may doubt, I may slip and slide on the deck, but I'm not going to fall off of the ship of Zion. But go back now and look at the first part of verse 17 of Romans 5, of Romans 4. "As it is written, I have made thee..." A father of Israel? No. Of many nations? Now, when God said that to Abraham, he was only the father of an illegitimate child. When God said that to Abraham, Ishmael, please pardon the expression, but I have to be actual and literal, Ishmael was a bastard son, because he and Hagar were not rightfully married. He had an illicit experience with her. Sarah was his wife, and at her insistence, he went into Hagar because of her unbelief. But God said, "I have made thee the father of many nations." But notice the grammatical expression that he uses there. He didn't say, "I'm going to make you. I have made you." Here is a thing of grammar that is so important. It is the present, perfect, indicative. Present, because it is already accomplished. "Clelling things that be not, as though they were." Perfect, because nothing else has to be added. Indicative, it is now being declared, and it's not subjunctive. Subjunctive is that form of speech whereby we say, "It might be. It may be." It doesn't have a real good firm foundation. But this is not subjunctive. This is indicative. "I have made thee." God is calling that which is not, as though it were, and He's the only one that can do that, and He is the only one that is able to do that. This is such a beautiful thing that we look. Now let's think about what the Lord has done for us. Let's think about what the Lord has done for us. There is a word in the New Testament that only appears two times. The first time is in Luke, chapter 1, and we'll read verses 28 to 30. Luke, chapter 1, 28 to 30. The other time that this word is found is in Ephesians, chapter 1, and verse number Let's turn in our Bibles and read those passages. The first verse in Luke 1, please read 28 to 30.
"And the angel came in unto her, and said, 'Hail, thou art highly favored; the Lord is with thee; blessed art thou among women.' And when she saw him, he was troubled at his saying, and cast in her mind what manner of salutation this should be. And the angel said unto her, 'Fear not, Mary; for thou hast found favor with God.'"
Okay, thank you. The word is favor and favor. Let's put that on here. Favor, favor. Now then, just kind of hold your finger there and turn over to the book of Ephesians, chapter 1, and verse number 6. Who has that?
"To the praise of the glory of his grace, wherein he hath made us accepted in the beloved."
Now that is a Greek word, and I don't know Greek, and I don't try the impression with anything like that, but I do have a good dictionary, and I can read a dictionary. And the word is karitok, and it means to grace, to endue with special honor, to make accepted, or to be highly favored. Now, he said that to Mary, and we can understand that, because Mary is about to become the mother of Jesus. There was an immaculate conception that took place. That was not Mary's experience. That was Jesus' experience. You can see the genealogy of Mary in the book of Luke, chapter 3, and you find exactly who her father was, a direct descendant of Adam. No way her conception could have been immaculate or perfect, but the Lord Jesus was conceived by the Holy Spirit in her womb. That is the immaculate conception, not Mary, but Jesus. Mary received grace, favor. What is grace? The undeserved favor of God. But that same word is applied to the believer, and these are the only two times in the Bible that these two words appear from that Greek word. "To the praise of the glory of his grace, wherein he hath made us accepted in the beloved." This is such an outstanding thing. Mary was a descendant of Abraham, and through her son, you and I have been, become the recipients of his grace. Okay, we'll bring our class to the close with this. It doesn't matter what we claim, it's what the Lord has claimed for us. We only have to have the assurance in our heart that we have left off the quirks, come clean with that, and trusted the Lord is our only sufficient Savior. God established a great and wonderful truth with Abraham, and we're going to follow this all the way through the Bible to see what the Lord has done for us. Do we have any question or any comment? If not, let's be dismissed. Our Father, we pray, for Christ's sake, that you would bless the truth of the Word of God throughout ours. Help us to grow in grace and knowledge, and we'll thank you in praise, for Christ's sake.